The Board of Trustees to order, 7:34 PM today, November 24th. Could I please have the roll?
Village President Torby.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullum.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the Village website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken. Susan Caljean, Village Clerk.
Okay. We have one resolution to go into executive session.
Resolution 304. Resolution authorizing an executive session at the November 24th, 2014 meeting of the Board of Trustees.
The matters to be discussed in executive session, one is fire department secession, which is a personnel matter, and the other is SEC continuing disclosure, which is an attorney-client privilege. In addition, we have one more item, which is HPC litigation, which is a potential litigation and attorney-client privilege. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Cullum, seconded by Trustee Levinson. All in favor? Any opposed abstentions? Back to you.
(noise)
Village President Torpe.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levison.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rother. Miss Absent, Susan Caljean, present.
Hey, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, a couple of announcements to get us started. Just another reminder that the Department of Public Works is, will be doing leaf collection through December 6th, so if you have leaves, just put them out. Try not to put them into the middle of the road, although we are expecting some storms, so you might want to do your yard work after that. So just try and leave it on the curb, right by the street there, and they'll be doing it through December 6th. Just another reminder about tableau in the Piero Gallery. The show explores the changing meaning of the dinner table through photography, collage, painting, craft, and sculpture. The show is open until November 26th, and you can visit it at the Baird Center on 5 Mead Street, 11 to 4 p.m., Monday through Thursday. Registration has begun for winter activities at the Baird. If you are interested in finding anything more about any different activities, you can go to the Baird.org, and those, everything should be beginning the first week of December, so if you haven't signed up for a class and are interested in doing so, please head to the website and do so as soon as possible. Another announcement about Small Business Saturday, so it's this Saturday, November 29th. This is the much, much, much better version of Black Friday. So instead of going out and trampling people and shopping, hang out with your family for an extra day, and then on Saturday, come downtown and shop at your local merchants instead. Not only is it great to support all of our local businesses, but if you spend more than $25 at any business in the downtown on Saturday, bring your receipt to the Village Center Alliance tent, which will be at Sloan Street in South Orange Ave. Show them your receipt that you spent more than $25, and you will be entered to win the grand prize of a $500 gift card to local South Orange businesses. So definitely worth saving up and doing whatever shopping you can on Saturday here downtown. And that Saturday evening is our Giants of Jazz. One of the most incredible performances on an annual basis that happens here, almost as good as what's happening up here right now. And that's at 8 p.m. here at Sopac, and it's honoring McCoy Tyner. It's going to be a great show, and there are still maybe a couple of tickets available. They get sold out pretty quick. So if you're interested in doing that, visit the Sopac website.
One addition?
Yeah.
Sorry, couldn't get this in earlier. It was just finalized today. We have Light Up the Holidays on Irvington Avenue, Friday, December 12th, from 5:30 p.m. to 8 o'clock p.m. It will be in the Pocket Park, which is West Fairview and Irvington Avenue. Some of the activities include a tree lighting, kids' crafts, live music, pictures with Santa, refreshments, and restaurant specials. And the event is sponsored between the Village, the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee, and the Seton Hall Student Government Association.
Great, thank you. And, all right, so that's all of our announcements. Let's move on to our public comment period. So I'll start with Leila Gonzalez-Sullivan.
Nope.
Okay. Craig Garcia.
Nope.
Okay. All right, well, that's my binder. If there's anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward. Just state your name and address, and try and keep your comments down to under three minutes, please.
Under three minutes?
You got a performance for us?
Oh, dominant. Like being on the stage, don't you?
Steve?
Should be.
Okay.
Steve always yells.
Testing, testing? Testing.
Is it, is it working?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, you can go ahead.
Testing, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Testing, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11.
All right, why don't you try one of these up here?
Should I try one?
We've got two more. You can come up here. And if not, you can have Trustee Levison's mic.
Testing. Testing, testing.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me now?
Well, we can hear you. Is it getting broadcast?
Well, it's definitely not getting amplified.
Barry?
No, but none of them are in the. He broke it, Steve. We're all dead.
Want to try the other mic?
No, we're all dead.
We're all dead?
Have we had any sound broadcast? Okay.
It's broadcast, just not amplified in the hall?
Okay.
It's a small group, everyone talk loud.
Use your theater voice.
That's an incredible theater voice. Yeah, so if you'd like to try and speak, at least it's getting broadcast out and going to the video.
Ah, Chris is here.
So just go ahead and just try and speak up for the folks in the back, or if you guys want to move up. But it's getting broadcast, so you can go.
Yeah, just go ahead. Okay. My name is Richard Bell, and I live at 321 Walton Avenue in South Orange. And I'm the president of the Feral Field Park Conservancy, which is why I'm here. Tonight is the first Board of Trustees meeting following the official closure of the animal shelter building, which is located on Walton Avenue. And the reason that I'm here, and that others from the park conservancy are here, is because we wanted to come and talk to you and kind of do something that we didn't, weren't able to do before the animal shelter came to be. And we want to avoid what happened back then. There's a lot of people who know the history, there's a lot of people who don't. If you don't know the history, ask someone who does, and they'll tell you. But I am not one who wants to get into that. Because now we have a wonderful building, and now we have to decide what to do with that building, how to reuse it. And, well, the reason we're here, the reason I'm here, and the others from the park conservancy, is we want to ask you to include us. Right now, actually, I know that, but I just want assurances, hopefully, from the board that we will be able, as the conservancy, to sit down with the administration and kind of go over what's best used for this building, and make recommendations. Not that we want to decide, we're not going to say, oh, well, our decision, we want to decide. But we want to discuss what's logical and what's best for the town, and also for the area that the building is in. Just, the one reason that we're here is that, the first thing that we heard when we called the town was that the Village was looking for a new animal shelter tenant, another organization that could, I think the term was, "do it right." But I can honestly say that that's going to, that's going to be hard for our neighborhood to accept. And, I mean, you've heard the complaints, so I'm not going to go over them, but we can go over them in the committee. But there's lots of great ideas from people in town. A municipal building that can be used by the DPW, or that could be used by the rec department, or both, would be a couple of great suggestions.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
Are you guys going to give us an assurance tonight?
Yeah, we'll, we, as we always do, we always respond to the public comments after the public.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing as there's no more members who wish to speak, I think what, you know, we can certainly say is that we'll most definitely include community stakeholders before the Village makes a decision about anything. I don't know if there's more that we can elaborate on the process right now. But, you know, before any decisions are made, and, you know, we've, we've kind of had similar conversations in the past about things in that neighborhood. And I think we've respected, you know, the promises that we made to not just go all the way down the, you know, the decision-making line without including, and at least letting folks know about, you know, more about what's going on. So maybe at a point when we're a little bit more ready to have that conversation, we can figure out how best to gather feedback. And, you know, I think in the meantime, if you have any ideas, if you have any thoughts, if there's any recommendations that you want to send formally on behalf of the group, I think we'd all be interested in those, in those ideas. So maybe that's something to at least get some thoughts down on paper and into us.
I would also add, I think we've done a really good job, based on our projects and initiatives, creating working groups that are a little bit more quick-moving. It doesn't require all of us to be looking through, sifting through materials. So if in theory we can agree that this facility will have some little working group, and that we would include the neighborhood in that, similar to what we're doing with Mary Lawn, Code Review, Police Headquarters, et cetera, that I would be open to welcoming the neighborhood to participate in that. Can we at least agree to that?
Sure.
I think that's what they're asking for right now.
Yeah, I think that's what we would, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my understanding, too, that they, that they want to be engaged right from the beginning, as opposed to reacting.
Well, I think we've done that with the New Jersey American proposal.
I think, I think the only issue is we can't do anything until litigation's done, or is that, is that, are you saying?
Yeah, so I don't know what the exact, do we have an exact idea?
We don't have an exact date, so we're kind of at the moment in a hold pattern.
Right. So at a point when we have a little bit better of an idea of a timeline, we'll certainly let you know if you want to distribute that kind of back out. And like I said, in the meantime, if there's anything that you want to send in, any ideas, you know, I think we're open to, you know, we're very much open to ideas at any point, you know, that we can do in parallel to anything else that's going on. And so we'll reach back out when we have a little bit better idea of what the timelines are. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we have one ordinance for second reading.
Ordinance 2014-21, second reading of public hearing. An ordinance to request the County of Essex lower the speed limit from 30 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour on a portion of South Orange Avenue from Ward Place to North Ridgewood Road.
Okay, seeing as this is the second reading, I'd like to open this ordinance up for public hearing. So if there's anybody from the public who wishes to comment on this ordinance specifically, you can come forward now. Seeing there are no members of the public who wish to comment on this ordinance, I'd like to close the public hearing. And unless there's any other further questions or comments from any of the board members, I'd ask for a motion.
I move. Whoa!
Trustee Schnall moves, seconded by Trustee Levison. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Cullen.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levison.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Schnall.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Levison, you have a question?
Yeah, we did the similar type of ordinance change for Valley, and I don't know if the county has changed the signs on Valley.
They haven't, I haven't seen any sign on Valley.
So maybe with the sending of this orders to the county, we can just check up on Valley as well.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Can I just add, one of the other things is that we are now probably close to 90% plus a 25 mile per hour community. I mean, there's very few streets where you can go above that. I think that's almost easier for residents, how we're marketing this, et cetera, is that with the few exceptions of a couple county roads and little slivers here and there, we are a 25 mile per hour town, drive 25 or slower. And I think that, that needs to be the message to residents moving forward.
Yeah.
Are we close, is that correct? I mean, I was going through the math.
Yeah, I think so, I'm thinking through some roads, yeah.
It's the remaining portion of South Orange Ave, but we changed, Scotland was 25, we changed Valley. Wyoming is faster, both sides of Wyoming are faster, but that's, yeah, but everything else is 25 or slower.
Although there's certainly, you know, the only, the only caveat I would kind of add is that, you know, I think, I mean, there's a big difference between Scotland and, you know, West End Road, right? I mean, they might both be 25, but, I mean, so yes, 25, that's good, but there are roads where you should not be driving anywhere near 25 also.
But the actual posted speed limits are 25.
Right, 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 true.
So it's a little just, I'm just saying, it's a little easier for people to conceptualize that the majority, overwhelming majority of the village is now 25 miles per hour, and actually has been, so.
Yeah, but that's true, because this is not, it's not like we're changing that.
So you're envisioning a welcome to South Orange, now drive 25 miles an hour.
Actually, Trustee Clark, you have to stand there and say that as motorists.
He'll ride next to them.
I was going to say, one exception is her driveway. Backing out.
Okay, and, and, you know, and I think, you know, it's certainly worth mentioning that that mentioning that that ordinance, I think, is just a piece of, um, obviously something that, um, Trustee Cullen has really taken a lot of the lead on, um, but that the board has been supportive of, of just generally traffic and pedestrian safety, in general, um, that that's something that is obviously a big priority for everybody here.
Trustee Clark and I have some more surprises we'll be, be bringing to the board shortly.
That's extremely exciting. Um, all right, so moving on to a couple appointments, um, that I'm happy to be able to make. Um, the first is, uh, appointment, a reappointment of Jeffrey Langsum as a regular member to the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, the second is, uh, reappointment of Jacob Levine as an alternate, uh, Class B member to the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, and the third is a reappointment of James McGowan as a regular member, um, to the South Orange Environmental Commission. So I'd like to thank, um, everybody for all the work they've done for us so far, and I think we're, you know, I'm certainly excited, I think everybody's excited to bring them back on board and, um, uh, and keep, and keep working. Um, so congratulations if you guys are watching at all. Um, all right, let's move on to our consent agenda.
Okay, resolutions on the consent agenda, uh, resolutions 305 through 311 have been placed on the consent agenda.
Um, I would just ask that we do 307 separately, because I'm going to have to accuse myself for that. Is that fine?
Okay.
Okay. So we want to do 305 through 311 minus 307.
And there was, yeah, one additional resolution, which, uh, and Trustee Levison could, could weigh in on it as well. Uh, it was before you tonight, I apologize for the original watermark, I grabbed them quickly out of the copier on the way over here and did not notice, I don't know why that's on there, but, um, this relates to certain security cameras and other improvements at the police department, which have been in the works and in process, but it was determined that unless they're done now, it's going to hold up the relocation of the communications center, and it's a whole, um, domino effect, uh, and that's why the last-minute addition. Um, they are under state contract, uh, it's been fully vetted by the, the police department, our consultants, and everyone else.
We did discuss this at the last board meeting during conference agenda, and Trustee Levison gave the quote to the board of what we received. So the amount is not to exceed 38,000.
Assistant with that.
Yes.
Right now, it's a critical component in the, uh, the relocation and reconstruction of the current dispatch center. So this will be 312?
This will be 312. So the motion would be for, uh, 214 through 312 minus 307. Okay, move by Trustee Rosner?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Levison, can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution 307 is for the, uh, paying a little taxes from Seton Hall, which is a three-year agreement, I forgot the exact amount, 400 and...
It's 75% of the...
75% of the, uh, of the assessed value of off-campus.
Of the otherwise applicable taxes. 75% of the otherwise applicable, what they would pay in taxes.
Which, do you want to give the dollar amount, which I think was 425,000 or so?
Which is next year. It goes up each year.
Yes, it goes up.
Yeah, for 2014, it's 428,657 dollars and 71 cents. And then it goes up, uh, 400, future years. 428,000.
Anybody want to...
I move.
A second. Trustee Davis Ford?
Get some money on him, he's doing the roll now.
Oh, yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Thank you.
If someone can, uh, you have to take him out of the soundproof booth.
Okay, um, so, we're now moving on to the report section of the agenda, like we mentioned last time, um, we're doing the regular meeting in the beginning, and the reports at the, um, second half of the meeting, in each meeting. And so I'm going to keep my report, um, short, um, but I, um...
Excuse me, can you just clarify that only half the trustees are reporting each meeting, so does...
Right, it's staggered with the meet, with the committee meetings.
Right, and, and it's actually, um, because of when the committee, committee meeting met, and then recognizing the village president in my report, we wound up, there's actually two trustee committees, plus village president, village administrator, one meeting, four committees on the other meeting, and that, in part, was also driven by when your meeting dates were, and so that you'd have relevant and timely information, and we were finding situations where you got to give a report, and you say, well, we're meeting tomorrow night, so that whatever you had was a month old, so.
This was one of the things that came out of the, um, the goal-setting and planning meeting that we had a couple weeks ago, um, and so it was just one of the couple changes that we're making to the meetings, to try and make them a little bit more efficient. Um, so to that end, I will continue. Um, so, uh, just two, just two little, um, updates. One is, I'm just from the League of Municipalities, um, we were all down there last week, um, I know a lot of people went to various workshops and, um, uh, learned, uh, a lot. I know, I was just going to speak for just a second about, um, the panel that I was asked to preside over, um, which was Downtown for Dollars, was basically talking about arts and culture and tourism in your downtown. Um, so we had folks from, um, different areas, from Princeton, from Atlantic City, um, from a couple different towns, and from Art Pride, um, and we talked about, um, um, you know, how arts are a major attraction and economic driver for your downtown. Um, that's something that I think that we recognize in this community for a long time, that there's a value not only to the arts and to the culture, just an inherent value, um, in themselves, but there's also a big economic value, too, um, and that they bring a lot of, you know, outside spending, so, you know, for every patron that comes to the Performing Arts Center, um, right, you get around 27 or 28 dollars of spending in your downtown from that. Um, so we talked about that, there was, um, folks from Art Pride, from the New Jersey, um, State Council on the Arts, um, who are now supporters of, uh, through grants of SOPA, um, and so it was a great opportunity, um, to talk a little bit about, uh, not just how great South Orange is, and how great SOPA is, but also a good chance to kind of learn and talk to some folks, and, um, Trustee Schnall and I, I think picked up on a couple good tips for some grants, too, while we were in there. Um, so that was exciting, and I know that everybody else, um, you know, had a lot to learn, and a lot of conversations with vendors, and panels, and other elected officials, and town officials, um, but just wanted to give a, a quick update about that. It really is, um, uh, one of the best opportunities for us all to meet other people that are doing what we're doing, showcase all the great stuff that we're doing in South Orange, which I can't, you know, understate how many people come up to me, and I know other, and I know everybody else on the board, um, you know, really excited to hear about some of the things that we're doing here in town, um, and I know it's always a good chance for me to catch up with some other mayors, and council people, and people, and school board members from other towns, and kind of ask them what the great things they're working on are. So there's always a good learning exchange that happens there, and, um, anyway, just to, you know, wanted to give a quick update, um, for that. Um, one of the other things that, um, that I've been working a little bit on, um, as it relates to a couple different redevelopment projects that we're looking at, um, and so just wanted to kind of give an update here, which was, uh, you know, in, um, uh, unfortunately, one of the things that we, and by we, I mean, uh, a royal we as in this country, um, don't do amazingly well, um, is provide, uh, job and economic opportunities, um, and housing opportunities for veterans. Um, and so in having conversations about how we craft what kind of redevelopment that we do, um, one of the things that I thought was particularly interesting was that are there opportunities or incentives for developers or for us, um, to build housing that's focused on, um, providing either transition housing for veterans, or permanent housing, um, or housing that somehow helps provide them some economic springboard, um, you know, there are conversations and, and concepts that could link that to some of the business incubation ideas that we've talked about, um, is, you know, if there are veterans that are trying to start their own business, um, you know, what if South Orange is a place that not only did a great job supporting, um, the retail businesses in the downtown, not only did a great job of trying to support entrepreneurs and business owners who lived in town, but then, you know, even a level beyond that is, um, you know, is veterans who are trying to, to do that as well. Um, and so, um, I've got a couple calls scheduled with, um, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and a couple, um, different state agencies as well, um, and so that applies to homelessness, that applies to economic development, and it's just something that I think is really interesting, and, um, obviously, these are people who've done a lot for us, so, um, if there's anything that, you know, that we can do on the local level to try and provide these, um, benefits or incentives, um, you know, certainly worth exploring. I haven't gotten much back yet, um, but I still have a few more conversations to have. Um, so hopefully, you know, there'll be something there that's, um, you know, economically viable for the village, and also provides this, you know, potentially a great opportunity to allow someone, um, you know, to move to our community at less of an expense. Um, and unfortunately, I don't think that providing housing for veterans, um, it doesn't count for your COA obligations at all. Those are, you know, fairly narrow, as far as what the affordable housing definition is. Narrow, and also very vague somehow these days. Um, so that's kind of where the conversation started and went, um, was that from an affordable housing perspective, there didn't really seem to be a lot of leeway in saying, well, um, can this be provided for just veterans, or can they move to the top of the list, the way some of the civil service lists do with hiring employees? Um, so anyway, just exploring that, if anybody has any ideas up here, or anybody, um, in the audience watching, you know, certainly interested in that, but, um, just wanted to give a little update that that's something that, um, that we've been looking into a little bit.
The federal tax incentives are really good for programs like that, so, you said you were going to speak with HUD?
Yeah, I got HUD, uh, someone from the White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs, um, but yeah, if you have any, any...
I, I can shoot you.
Yeah, if you have anything more about that, I'd love to see that, and hopefully, I've got emails going back and forth, hopefully someone will figure it out.
COA is silent about where this falls on the...
It doesn't, it doesn't seem like that is something that's built into COA, I don't know if, if any of you guys...
Because, you know, we have, we have, do have funds available for rehabilitation, and we'll have other money available, so if we had properties we could identify, the question is, I guess, can you, can you give preference to veterans for an affordable housing unit? And I don't know that you can.
Yeah, it didn't seem so, and we can't use our Affordable Housing Trust Fund money for that either.
Uh, no, it, it, that's solely limited to COA-eligible, obviously if the veteran was income-eligible, um, and, and quite frankly, it's not even really a preference, because we would love and give an open shout-out to anybody that's eligible, we do have funds available for rehabilitation, would love to spend them to help our residents rehabilitate their homes, we've just had some difficulty identifying, um, eligible property owners, so veteran or non-veteran, we're, we're here to help.
Thanks. All right, uh, Mr. Lewis?
Okay, a couple of, uh, updates, we, um, last week, as of Thursday, are officially out to bid for the Village Hall renovation. Uh, you recall, we went through a pre-qualification process, so out to bid means to those pre-qualified contractors, of which there were seven total pre-qualified contractors, so they've all been, uh, sent the bidding package, it is not open to other contractors who do not go through that process. Uh, current timetable, uh, is set for receipt of bids on January 22nd, um, to the extent there is clarifications or addendum that have to be issued, the law requires, depending on when that is, you may have to push that receipt date back, but we won't know that unless they come to us with certain questions or interpretations. Um, at the same time, uh, we continue to have out there, and, and again, in parallel, the RFP for the potential adaptive reuse, uh, we've had some interest, um, the marketing consultant has sent out stuff, but there's a deadline for that, so that may filter in, as that gets out there, we may get, we've, more on a local end, we've had inquiries and, and actually given some tours to, uh, potentially interested parties.
What type of organizations or companies did you give tours to?
Uh, well, I'm, I'm happy to share that sort of offline, but given that that could ultimately be sort of a contract negotiation and potentially competitive...
That's fine, would you get that to me?
Absolutely.
Okay, another question regarding the, um, the RP's, uh, for contractors, when it, when, when are those bids due?
Uh, I got to look at it, it's the last week in December, we wanted to make sure we still had several weeks before, uh, you know, when we, kind of, as the bidding date got pushed back, we pushed that back, so I, I want to say it's whatever, last Tuesday, I want to say.
That's for the sale, and then the ones from the pre-qualified is...
The actual bidder's bidder's is January 22nd.
January, yeah.
Right.
Thank you for the clarification. And, um, I just, as a reminder, that I requested to be a part of that committee to review.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Uh, oh, COA update, I did, um, some of it confidential, but I did provide an update from our COA counsel, uh, with some of his legal interpretations, opinions about the current status of COA, um, just as a follow-up, and as you're all aware, we are, um, operating under his advice and guidance in evaluating, you know, our COA obligations, how to address future ones. One of the other components of this is, we need to, and we will be, in the relatively near future, issuing an RFP for what's called an administrative agent, um, they do get fees, but those fees are eligible to be paid out of our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and what they will do is administer, um, in terms of the affirmative marketing and some of the other components of COA units, and it's where it'll become particularly applicable in the near future, is with, with the Jonathan Rose units coming online, because under the agreement, um, the village, those would be the first ones that I'm aware of, that we have the obligation to administer and oversee, so, um, I don't think we have the personnel nor the bandwidth in-house, um, so I think the, the better way to do it is, uh, we're going to go out for an RFP, hopefully we'll have that shortly, and then present that, but again, that is payable out of the Affordable Housing Trust.
That makes sense. Now, um, what is the, uh, status of our fund, if it's not appropriate to, say, the amount, but do you feel it's adequate?
Yeah, well, it's adequate, and we, we did receive in, um, the, uh, first payments, and, and Gateway, actually the second payment is due now, because it's usually broken up a half on issuance of building permits, half, half on CO. So if we have not received, we will very soon be receiving the second half of the Gateway. We did receive the first, um, half of the Jonathan Rose, we're currently a little over 400,000, with another roughly 300,000 to come, so...
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Uh, lastly, a couple updates specifically on the redevelopment projects that are ongoing, the, um, Gateway is now fully CO'd, they're open, um, I think he anticipates, uh, even some of his commercial tenants moving in shortly, you may have seen, I think, even some of the hauntings and things are up, so that, that's exciting. Uh, Jonathan Rose continues to...
Getting back to the Gateway, do you have a sense of the percentage of occupancy?
I, I could find out, I don't know specifically, I know, I know he was pretty pleased with how many units he had already rented, rented up, got deposits, uh, there's, there's an increasing number of people moving in, and he, like I say, all three floors are now CO'd and, and eligible for people to move in, I don't think there's any units not open. All the one-bedroom units are completely rented out.
What, what did you say?
All of the one-bedroom units are completely rented.
Awesome. That's all I wanted to know, a sense of whether, you know...
Yeah, no, they're doing well, and then, um, Third and Valley, um, continues to be on schedule, and if you've seen it, they, they've done a good operation, they're cranking along, they're out there in the rain, they're in the lousy weather, getting it done, so, um, even as recently as yesterday, they continue to indicate, uh, projected completion date December of, uh, next year, 2015, which is, uh, again, very good news, also part of the reason we got to get this COA thing going. Um, the deck's moving along, we have a follow-up meeting scheduled for, uh, next week, um, just to iron out some of the details with the parking authority and the, and the operation of the deck, uh, but, but that one's moving along, and then, obviously, there's some other things in the work that we have discussed and will continue to discuss in executive session.
So the deck is planned to open before...
Well, there, there may be a possibility, you know, largely because the deck is actually integrated into the building, so there are connections between it, and then there's also some actual building space in front of the deck along Third Street, so, uh, certainly there's a possibility that some of the residential units may not be completed, but the deck will be open, but it's not that it's going to be open six months before the unit, so... But, moving along, and those, those were the highlights I wanted to hit.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Yeah.
Um, have we sent the letter to COA for, um, the request for our...
Yeah, no, we, we didn't, but we're about, uh, we're getting close, uh, and, um, to Trustee Cullen's point, this was one we discussed previously, we subsequently then had a meeting with, uh, both our planner and our COA counsel, over the mechanism by which we could request, and whether it was a full-blown amendment to our spending plan, or an interpretation that it was an authorized expenditure within our spending plan, to utilize authorized expenditure within our spending plan to utilize some of our affordable trust funds to make available a fund by which some of our existing eligible properties could apply for emergency repairs, the one specific example related to an emergency generator and existing affordable eligible, so from that meeting, I think, I think we developed what we think our approach is, and we should be submitting that to COA very soon.
And can you also give an update on the master plan RFP, because the planning board has now sent emails to trustee members...
Your report is next meeting. I'm actually going to do a report through me, too.
No, I think we, we owe them an explanation because it's been a month since their meeting.
Yeah, no, the, the master plan RFP is, the ball's in my court right now, I did go through it, there was a lot of, I think, valuable input and a lot of hard work from a lot of stakeholder groups, but some of which I'm having to kind of fine-tune to make more goals than requirements. It was, the way it was written was in such a way that, A, it would exclude, I think, a lot of potential firms that would also, I think, potentially drive the cost up if every single thing that was in there was a requirement, but we will hopefully get that finalized and, and out and issued, I would say, by the end of next week, not this week's short week, but the following week.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just add something to Barry's, our bond from last, for last week, the refunding of the ECIA loan was completed last week, and it projects about $350,000 savings over seven years.
Wow, that was a, that was a long time coming, so that process has finally been completed.
Yes.
Can you restate the savings again?
350,000, over seven years.
That's significant.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Rother?
Yeah, we've had some progress on the alternate water source front. We've been able to negotiate some very flexible terms over and above what we, we found in the initial drafts of the commodity demand contract with New Jersey American. They, they have given us the ability to fine-tune the amount of water that we need to purchase over the course of the first two years, which is something that we were looking for, so that we're going to be able to buy water in that sweet spot, so we're not buying more than we need and be able to control the costs for our residents. I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to have that contract up for approval by this body at the next trustee meeting. We had a meeting of the committee last week to go over the critical terms, there was agreement on that, we're exchanging now a, hopefully a final iteration of that contract for approval by, by the board. We've also moved along with the O&amp;M, the operating and management contract for the water system. In our meeting last week, we, we agreed on some basic terms that we wanted to see in this arrangement, namely a three-year contract with three-year renewals with the option to terminate early in the event that the governing body would like to sell the system, so that we've created the greatest degree of flexibility in, in both the source of water and the operations of the system, so that we can make choices down the road and our hands won't be, be tied as they have been in the past here. I circulated a memo to all of you indicating the process that we have to go through for the O&amp;M contract, and unless any of you have comments or suggestions for changes, any criticisms, I would like to suggest that that memo be posted on the website so that everyone can understand the process that we're going to go through and the timeframe that's going to be involved.
I think that would be helpful. I also think Steve is downplaying the amount of wiggle room he managed to get out of that contract, because it's going to be really significant and making things easier for us going forward.
I do have one question that we were, request from the consultant, information about what I call a bread box.
Yeah, that's, we're expecting that, that shortly.
Okay. Has there been any, any feedback from East Orange Water, or any comments from them on anything?
They, they have indicated to us that they, they would like to speak to us in the new year going forward about potential supplemental sources. They still, they still have not, on the, on the litigation front, they still have not signed the administrative consent order, which will be the trigger for us to terminate that litigation and for us to make application for council fees, that has yet to happen.
Okay.
The, I, I should say that the special master has been pressing them to get that done. One of the things we've suggested to the special master that if it doesn't happen soon, that he should intercede with the EP to make sure that that happens more rapidly.
And finally, Barry, the, the current testing for East Orange Water continues, there's been no, no levels over the norm?
Yeah, there have been none, and we did, there was, something fell through the cracks in the posting, we will get them updated and posted, but I did review them and there's none that...
Okay.
Yeah, and I distributed what was on the Water Work, on the Water Watch website. I do have a question, I got a letter from somebody in the village suggesting that they had an article that they were looking at, suggesting that East Orange Water was selling their system, and we would have a rate increase, a significant rate increase as of January 2015, but that's not true, we have a separate contract with them which establishes what rates we pay. Just a comment, just a comment to this note that I got.
Okay. All right, trustee Clark?
Okay, after the buildup we did on how we changed around the reporting process, I feel kind of sully saying that I had no report out of the Public Works Committee because it was superseded by the municipalities convention. So, no public works and infrastructure update, I will say though, that I also felt like I got a fair amount out of the League of Municipalities. As Sheena alluded to, we were super jazzed about some public safety things which we hope to be giving you some more details on later, but also, for me personally, it was, it was good to get back down, down there and swim around in the sustainable Jersey crowd and kind of rep me up and for coming back here and pushing that through in South Orange, and glad to say the Environmental Commission is on board with that one and working on it, so...
Okay.
Over to...
Trustee Rosner?
Trustee Rosner.
Yeah, we met a couple of weeks ago, the meeting, we got, we got a report from the chairperson of the Board of Adjustment, Rusty Reeves, who wanted to talk to us about some issues regarding the H-PAC and, and Mary Lawn, and, and their feelings about that we need to do some changes to at least have discussions about the zoning, which we'd already started, and the, most of the meeting was spent with the Historic Preservation Committee, giving us their feelings and reasons why we should consider passing that, their, their version of element of the master plan, which I think, as Sheena described, is one of the longer elements that we would have in the master plan, that, and they, they have reasons for why they would like us to pass it right away, and even if we redo it and revisit it when the whole, the whole plan is done, and we think we agreed that we would read it and consider it, but we made no, no definite decision, we were delivered the package tonight, at least the members of the Planning and Zoning Committee were, were delivered the, their version of it, which goes on fairly long, so which we'll discuss at the next Planning and Zoning Committee and come back with a recommendation to the board at the, on my next report, although they do, they would like it be done, they would like us to vote on this sooner than later. I'm not 100% convinced that the urgency is there that we have to do it right away. But anyway, that's, that's where we stood, and we also discussed COA, but Barry already gave an update on that, you want to add something?
Can we add that as a discussion item for the next meeting agenda?
The Plant, the HPC, the master enrollment, the historic master enrollment for the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments, does anybody who wishes to speak? You know the drill, Alyssa.
I'm thrilled.
And the mic should be working down there now.
I know that.
You know more than I do.
Let me explain to the, I got the bill. Good evening. Council President Torpey.
Speak into the mic, sweetheart.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I've been listening to you for a long time, isn't it? Good evening, Council President Torpey, councilmen, councilwomen, can you please give us, can you give the 18,000 residents of South Orange an update on the Eli Russo property on South Orange West?
Could you clarify, are you talking about the one on South Orange Ave or South Orange Church Street?
Well, both, actually.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, well, the update on the one on South Orange Ave is that you mentioned that the COs are all issued, people are moving in, is this, yeah, and I don't know how much we...
No, with the other property that I assume she referred to, which is on the corner of South Orange Ave and Church Street, it's matter of public record that a company affiliated with Mr. Iusso has purchased that property, it did have existing approvals from the prior order, Mr. Nagim, that he took it with those approvals, we are certainly interested and will meet with him and work with him to see what type of development or redevelopment could happen on that parcel and/or to include any adjacent parcels, that's really where it stands.
And, and we have a resolution that we passed to lease, to lease that property once it's...
Yeah, that's correct, the, the buildings that are there should be coming down relatively shortly, the property will then be graded and stoned and become some additional...
Temporary surface park.
Yeah, pending the completion of the deck on Third Valley.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Levison?
Yeah, I move the bills list distributed by the CFO to the board for their review and, and comment.
Seconded.
Okay, moved by trustee Levison, seconded by trustee Davis Ford, can we have the roll please?
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, unless there's any new business, motion to adjourn? Motion. Moved by trustee Cullen, seconded by trustee Schnell. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, good night.
I already made the motion.